Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 8, 2014 meeting. Board of Selectmen. Have a couple of items, quite a few items today. I'm gonna meet with the fire chief, get a status report, and a bunch of Jericho Road, and public safety building update, and so on. So we'll start off. One of the new announcements I'd like to make would be the new building inspector. We have Kyle Scott is our new building inspector. He'll be replacing, he replaced Stanley Sedalsky. And his office hours are Monday through Friday, I believe, 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning. And I believe on Wednesdays, he's here in the evening from 5:30 to 7:30, I think. So you might want to check the TV, and so on. It'll give the hours, and so on. Okay. Is there anybody here for public forum? I don't see anybody here, so we'll go right into the minutes. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second. I have discussion.
Okay. I've got one change on the first page, which says Chairman Lusko opened the meeting at 8:05. He reported that while an executive session, the board, while an executive session should be striked. Okay. It should say the board agreed to give a 1.5 call. That didn't happen during executive session. It was an open session. Yes?
I think also it was, should be a .5 instead of 1% in the second sentence. It was a total of 2.
It was a total of 2%?
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be .5.
Correct.
Okay. Good catch. You have that key?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other changes?
No.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion approved water select minutes of 24 June.
Second.
Made and seconded. I also have a change, couple of changes on that. The front page, under Woodbridge Circle, it says Kelly Tovin appeared before the board regarding a situation on Hurkutasack. It should say the Woodbridge Cutasack, not Hurkutisack. Town Hall Fields. And also down near the bottom, the second paragraph up from the bottom, it's, where it says Chairman Lusko said he was unaware of any plans for a war memorial. War should be taken out. It was a memorial. There was nothing said about a war memorial. And on the next page, under water and sewer abatement, okay, the second paragraph down, it says Chairman Lusko said they need to clean up and put loam back, clean up in this area, clean up the area in the field, and put the loam back. Just didn't make sense with what we're talking there. And then also, with the loam back if needed. And then there's a paragraph in there that goes on to say Mr. Genovese asked for direction about the homeowner's water leak. That should be a separate paragraph in itself. Everything is lumped into that one, you see, and then it goes back into the topsoil. So that sentence in there where it says Mr. Genovese then asked the board what direction to take regarding a request he was receiving regarding a homeowner's water leak, that, and then it says the bill is $13,000. Chairman Lusko suggested she put the check, she checked, she should check with her insurance company. That should be down below everything. Okay? Because it just didn't make sense. It shouldn't confuse somebody that's reading the minutes. And then Mr. Genovese, then that other part can go, get moved right up. And the town hall hours, okay, it says Chairman Lusko, let's see, down, it says Chairman Lusko said the public can use feedback. It says we can use, we can use the feedback from the public. Because that was the intention, okay, to put a suggestion box up there so we can get the feedback.
I thought what you meant there was the public can provide the feedback. It's all right, whatever.
Okay. That's all I had. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Accept it with the changes. Can you oppose? Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion approved water select executive session minutes of 9 June.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Any corrections, additions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved water select minutes executive session 24 June.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Water select minutes of 25 June.
Second.
Seconded.
There's a blank at the end of the...
Yeah, I have forgotten.
Last sentence.
Yeah. I don't remember when that meeting ended. I never wrote it down.
Strike the sentence.
Okay.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. You got one more there, Jeff?
Oh.
February 25th. I'm not quite sure why.
I think that's just for reference purposes.
That's a different...
Okay. That's for some...
Yeah. That's just background information.
Okay. Phil, you're on. No, Phil. I'm sorry, Phil.
Close to Bill.
No. Close.
There's a couple pieces in your, I just handed out that I received today, in regards to the water transmission main. The contractor has been talking to our consultant engineering, and they're hinting around a 30-day extension on the contract. So after a lengthy discussion with Mike All today, we both are on the same page about them completing the project. As the contract states, as far as the water main, we want the pipe in the ground, we want it tested, everything done, and then we'll look at the cleanup later on. We have a 30-day extension. But as of right now, we feel that the contractor can surely finish that project on time as far as laying the pipe and getting it tested. So he sent a letter, as you can see, emailed it to Gilherih Construction today after our discussion, and I just want to bring the board, let the board be aware of that because there is liquidation if he doesn't complete on time.
Okay.
So we'll see how it goes.
Got anything else? We'll take up Jericho Road afterwards.
Okay.
Anything here? On the boring underneath 91, have we heard anything yet in the state?
No. I did somewhere along the line, I don't think it was through the MMA site, but it was in the, in something in the legislature that July 16, they're supposed to be taking up the transportation bond. So I'm hoping that that's when it's gonna come out.
Because I read, it looked like it was approved a while back.
Yeah, I thought, I know.
You had to really look down through everything to find it.
Yeah, it's not, they're gonna take it up to July 16, so.
Okay.
I think that, I mean, it's in there. That part, at least it's in there.
Well, they get it approved and that, yeah.
You know.
Has anything been done as far as looking at the next phase, with putting that out for bid? Can we get that?
No.
How come we're not...
The next phase of after...
Going underneath 91. Why can't we put that out for bid?
Well, we could put it out to bid.
Get it on.
Pending funding, I guess.
Well, we...
Because if it fails, we're not, it's a dead issue.
Well, the most we can do is get it underneath and pass the railroad tracks. That's as much as we...
We're okay to do that.
Yeah.
We're okay to get to Brockway Smith.
It's the next phase. After it gets under the tracks, that's it, unless we get to $400,000.
Right.
And so we got two...
Understandable. So the question that I have is, why not go put it out for bid, get it ready to move forward, okay? And then if we get the money, that's great. We'll go all the way up to...
Gore Avenue.
Gore Avenue. If we don't get the money, we'll stop right at Brockway. But let's get the thing out to bid, and it's gonna be another year if we don't. Doesn't make sense to wait.
Well, I mean, I can surely discuss that with CEI.
You know?
Well, but we'll know, as Kokat told us, by July 31st.
Whether it's a yes or no.
Whether we've got...
I know.
The money or not.
That's what I'm saying. Let's get the, let's get it moving.
I mean, it's a 30-day bid process anyways, so.
Yeah. So let's get the thing moving.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, by the time you're all set and done.
Takes a month, at least, yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's gonna be another month, and it's closer to winter, and that way we can get it moving now.
Yeah, we can, I mean, everything's ready to go. What's engineered, it's all, it's all set. It's a matter of waiting.
So let's get it out to bid.
Okay, that makes sense.
Well, the other, the other thing, though, is if, recall when I spoke to Senator Rosenberg's staff, they very much encouraged that we submit a mass works project for that piece if we don't get this thing funded through the transportation bond bill, or we don't get an appropriation for fiscal year '15 on the transportation bond bill. So that piece from Brockway Smith to Chester Street Circle, was it Circle?
Gore Avenue.
Plain, plain road up the top of the hill.
It goes right to Gore Avenue. That's where it goes to, yeah.
That section. So they, they thought that would be a...
And you have an existing...
An excellent project.
Existing business.
Where we had put in a whole bunch of money, it's, you know, going through that swampy area, the river, critical piece that needs to get done. So they were very supportive of if, if it doesn't get funded, that we ought to try that, so. I was gonna bring this up as to...
The only thing that that, I mean, I can understand that, you know, that's probably a good way to go, but it's, the criteria's not gonna be met as far as the submission, what they're looking for as far as housing and all that stuff. So I think a discussion prior to submitting it has to be done with the legislators.
Okay.
Just saying, we didn't, you know, it failed in the bond bill. This is a critical piece of what we're trying to get it out of that swampland up there.
Well, my point is, you're gonna have all the data, you already have all the data. All it is is a matter of packaging it up for the, for the grant submission. I mean, you've done all the homework.
And we invested millions.
So it's a backup option, too.
It's really critical that we get the water line on the other side of 91 in the, in the tracks. It's really critical.
Well, we're gonna do that. It'll be...
That's in this phase.
We're funded for that.
But I mean, I'd like to see that done before winter.
Yeah. Because we surely don't want to go through the permitting process again.
No. And that way, if something...
Narrowed in 91, it's a nightmare.
If something did happen, we could, we could run, we could...
You could tie it in.
Shut that water off and tie it in through hoses and run it into the next hydrant.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
Okay, if we had to.
Yeah, you could string it over the bridge if you had to.
Yeah. All right, you'll keep us up to date on...
I will.
Where we're at with that. So who's gonna, who's gonna take the ball and get it out for bid?
Well, Mike All has all the documents. He's the bidding contractor, so he'll put it out.
All right. Any other? Brian, you got it?
Nope. Go ahead.
Jeff?
Well, I'm a little concerned about putting together, putting together the package is one thing. Putting it out without money is something else.
Yeah, it has to, you know...
But we'll know July 31st. Yea or nay?
We wouldn't be able to, we're gonna be, I mean, we'd have to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay? Whether we get the money or not, it has to be done.
Yeah, preparing the bid package is fine.
We just can't finish the project.
Yeah.
Okay? So the bottom line is, hopefully we'll get the money and we'll go through. So if you put it out for bid now, one way or another, it's gonna get paid for. You following me?
I think the only question is, is anybody gonna bid on it if they're not sure you have the money, right? I think that's what Jeff's trying to...
Well, there isn't. The money is there.
Well, no, we're not gonna know till July 31st.
No. No, what this is, Brian, is...
Right? Isn't that what we just said?
Yeah.
The original project, the original project goes from Mountain all the way to Gore Avenue.
Understood. Right.
Then it costs us an additional $400,000 to go under 91.
Right. Correct. Right.
If we, if we spent all our money that was allocated that we approved at town meeting, we could get it to the driveway of, we could go under 91 and get it to the driveway, but we can't go to Gore Avenue.
No, I understand that, but I think what we're discussing now is that last, or that next phase.
The last piece.
Or the potential. It's the last piece.
Right.
Which we're not gonna know if we have the money for until July 31st.
You have to pick it up after railroad tracks and do something with the Mill River.
The rest of it's already moving forward.
Yeah, because we allocated the money to go under 91 instead of going over the Mill River. That's what we did.
Right. So to put the bid specs together and...
Wow, how long does that take?
Traditionally.
About a month.
Yeah, so it's a 30-day process.
To put it all together before it hits the newspaper and...
To bid it. To open the bids, it's 30 days. If we, if we put it out today, if we put it out today, 30 days from now, you could open the bids.
So August 10 through August 15.
But who's gonna bid on it before July 31st, not knowing if Hatfield's getting the revenue? That's the question, I think. That's, that's what I'm...
But the revenue is there.
That's what I'm...
No, it's not.
No, it's not. What revenue...
Okay, the way I understood it...
We'll know one way or the other in three weeks. In three weeks, we're gonna know whether we have the money or not, right?
We're looking for the transportation bond bill to get the money.
Right.
To go from Brockway Smith to Gore Avenue. In order to finish our project, okay, we have enough money to get to Brockway Smith.
Correct.
Okay?
We have, now we have.
Now.
Right now, we have it.
Okay? So we could go under 91. We need the $400,000 because the state costs us the $400,000.
We gotta...
So if we get the $400,000, we can continue on...
That's correct.
Correct.
Right. And we'll know, getting the $400,000. We'll know July 31st.
But I guess what I'm saying is, the money is there to go to Brockway.
Already.
Already.
Yes. We don't need any new contracts or anything. We're all, we're getting to Brockway.
That's exactly right. So why not just put it out to bid? That's what I'm saying. Put it out to bid to get the Brockway, you know, the boring under 91.
No.
That's...
That's, that's complete.
You're looking to complete the whole...
I'm looking to put out the bid from Brockway to Gore Avenue.
Right.
For the $400,000.
We're, we're okay to Brockway.
Underneath 91, underneath the railroad.
So we already bid it to underneath, that's all?
All the costs.
Yep. Okay. So then we're all set then?
Yeah. It's the other section. And the only reason that I'm a little...
Now I understand what you're saying.
Now I'm a little leery to put that out, because when people read that pending, you know, funding pending...
Right.
The price is up. I'll tell you right now.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a little bit higher, not knowing that I can commit my guys for whatever time it's gonna be if you don't get the funding.
Well, if we're gonna know July 31st, if everything's ready to fly, then on August 1st, if July 31st, then if the funding comes through, then you can put it out. I think that would...
Yeah, we can wait. You know, hopefully that on July 16th, it goes through, and they debate it, and within a few days, you'll know.
Right.
You know, even if it's not finalized, you know, as it's approved.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Phil? If not...
The other thing is...
Jericho Road, but that's down in the top of three.
Well, I just...
But he's gonna be leaving, so...
You had a...
Well, you're gonna wait for, till we take up...
I did have a conversation with Mrs. Donaldson about what happened over there with the water.
Yes.
And she said that she did contact her insurance company and is waiting, so.
Okay.
When she finds out, we'll find out.
I think they'll pay for that.
I don't know.
And, all right, Bill, you're on.
Hey.
Bill, we're looking for a status report, just update us on your department, and so on, and these guys, we've got any questions or whatever.
Okay.
And then we'll also talk about the firehouse door, and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Just give us an update on where we're at.
Okay. So the office has essentially moved over to the new building. There are a few things. I still do our incident reports here, because I didn't want to move the software package over, because we're gonna be, we're working with Paul on getting a new software package that will handle both the fire and ambulance incident reports that we submit to the state on a monthly basis, so. Well, once we get that done, then I'll be done with the computer in here, so I won't have to come over here and do our incident reports. So we're slowly moving things out. We're still getting organized over there. I know we have some organizations to do in front of the COA vans. We have, you know, stuff over there that we need to get organized, so we can get the building inspectors pick up back into the stall, so. Some of the stuff over there is the police department, but we're working together, so we're getting all that organized.
Is there any stuff that's gotta go out, get, you know, discontinued or anything like that?
There might be a few items, but it's not gonna be much of anything, because we've pretty much gone through everything, you know, and moving, so.
If you give us a list, we'll declare it surplus property, and we can put it out.
Right.
If anybody wants to buy it, fine. If not, then we have a right to throw it out.
Right.
Nobody's gonna want it.
Okay. So, other than that, the building itself has come together. We still have to get the internet hooked up over there, so we're working it, well, we have the internet and Comcast in the offices, but the wireless, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah.
That was part of the project, so we're still working on that piece of it. So Stephen's been doing a lot of work on that. He's been working with, talking with you, I guess, right?
Yeah.
So, so we're, you know, we're getting there, so.
Okay.
Slow but sure, so.
How about staffing? I misunderstood. I thought you were gonna give kind of a...
Yeah, well, no, no.
How goes it? What's your, what's your target number of volunteers to have, and where are you on that?
Actually, right now, we have 26 of us, and we have two applications from people that, you know, young, young guys that live in town. One's in the reserves, and one's a young fellow from town, so.
What's your target?
Well, we like to keep it around there, 25, 26, 27, somewhere in there, so, I mean, we always seem to lose some. You know, this is, this is the highest I've seen it in years.
Okay.
You know? And it's getting them through the training process. We had five come on last year, but only one right now is where you can actually, you know, they, they train to the firefighter 1-2 standard, they call it. So when you get up to firefighter 2, you can actually go in and on a working fire, you know, with a, you know, without an officer with you. Otherwise, you know, you bring them along slowly. And so we've got, you know, the other four are closed, but there's some other training they have to do to get that point, so we don't, we don't put them in there unless we feel comfortable with them, so.
Okay, so the other 22 are at the...
Yes.
Two-stage, or?
Yes, yeah, firefighter 1-2, correct, so. So, you know, it's, it's been going along well. They go through the county school, and that's a, it's a long process, you know, because they go Sundays every other week for, like, almost seven months, you know, to get, and it's just basic training. That's besides, well, we train on Thursday nights, so we still train on Thursday nights, so. So it's actually been working out pretty well, and out of the new, new people we got, we just have one becoming EMT. There's two more that are looking to go this fall to be, you know, to take the basic EMT class, so, which is good, you know, because the fire department and the ambulance, you know, we're close together, and we're doing a lot of, you know, first responder calls with the ambulance, too, so.
I was gonna get to the ambulance in a minute, but...
Oh, go ahead.
How about equipment status on the fireside?
Well, we're actually in pretty good shape, so, you know, other than that, other than, you know, the idea of when these new recruits come along, you know, once we get them up to a certain level, we have to get them gear that's sized to them, so, you know, now you're talking 16 to $2,000 apiece, so. So what we've been doing is squeezing out of our budget, but, you know...
How about responses? You know, what kind of, what's the call volume been over the last year?
The calendar year 2013, we actually had 163 calls, which is the most I've ever logged since I've been keeping the records. And our average was around 114, so it was up substantially. And a lot of that was probably, you could, because of carbon monoxide alarms, you know, they, it was seven years ago that that law came in effect, that you had to have a carbon monoxide detector, and those carbon monoxide detectors are only good for seven years.
Oh, it's all right.
So, and they said that, you know, you're gonna start seeing a lot of calls, and it proved to be true, you know, so we got a lot of calls based on that, so. And we're still getting them, you know, so.
Can you break it down, Bill, the carbon monoxide calls versus the other?
I did in the town report. I didn't bring the numbers with me, but I do have that.
Long as you're...
I do have that number, so.
How about the ambulance? Where are we sitting with the ambulance here? I know we, we're looking to push and get more recruits coming in. Where do we stand with that?
I kinda anticipate this question. I was hoping Stephen could make it tonight, but he couldn't make it tonight, so there's a lot of, you know, we like to come in and meet with the board, you know, and discuss this thing, because he and I have had discussions about it, you know, and we've been looking, You know, and we've been looking, you know, to get people to, through the class. Like I said, we just had one graduate become an EMT, so he's starting to respond to calls. Obviously, you gotta bring him along, you know, train him with your response and so forth. Then we got two that wanna go this, uh, this fall, so. Yeah, we're missing calls. I'm asking Stephen to look at, you know, re-instituting that on-call, you know, so we get two people commit for, you know, nighttime coverage.
How many do we have on the EMTs right now?
Uh, there's only seven of us.
What's your target that you'd really like to have?
Should have about fifteen.
Yeah, you should, right, so. I think that's the original numbers when we had.
Original number, fifteen, fifteen, eighteen, that's what we started out with back in the eighties and that worked the best.
Right.
Okay, so you're looking at half here. I'd like to see some kind of a plan on how we're gonna get that back up.
Right.
And, I mean, I'd look at every avenue, including exploring, you know, what we'd have to do to maybe share services with another community.
Yeah.
Okay, sure, EMT service, just the manpower.
Right.
We've got our ambulance, but shared manpower. I mean, that's something you guys should be looking into and, and to see how we can get this thing back up.
Right.
Well, we do have backup
Yes, we do.
With Northampton, with the contractors, so.
Right.
It's not as though we're not covered, but.
Right.
But
Right, it's Hattfield, but it's not covering it, but it's covered.
How about the equipment status on the ambulance side? Or do you wanna, do you wanna wait till?
I'd rather wait till Stephen's here, you know.
That's fair enough.
You know, he does all the work on that.
Back-to-fire grants. I know there's this nine-July submission, FEMA, pre-disaster mitigation
Yes.
flood mitigation assistance. Are we putting in for that?
No, we couldn't, because the
Pineapple Valley Planning Council was dragging their feet on that and they did Northampton, but they didn't do Hattfield.
They didn't do Hattfield. They have not updated our, uh, plan. Like they were, you know, contracted to do.
Was this our hazardous, uh, mitigation plant?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I mean, I remember, you know, talking to PVPC about all this and so how long ago was that? Now, was that two years ago or?
That was about several months back.
It was a few months ago, so.
They were supposed to have
We were told it was not gonna be done until
Yeah.
after the grant, the grant closes tomorrow, so.
Yes, I know.
So. Cindy did a lot of checking into it and
So that was a prerequisite to have a current hazard mitigation plan?
Yes.
And they kept putting it off and they kept saying to us that, well, we can still apply for the grant. Well, the bottom line was, we can't apply for the grant without an updated mitigation plan.
That's right.
Mema told Cindy.
Pineapple Valley Planning Council said they got the okay from Mema and then when Cindy checked, she said, no, that wasn't the case and so they kinda let us down on that, because I talked to Pat Conville from, from Mema and he said that this year there was a lot of money out there for the cities and towns to apply for, a lot more than usual.
Not to belabor, but I thought they approached us about
They did, yeah.
I'm surprised, I guess.
Yeah, I can't remember her name. I think she called me, said, your, your plan will be expiring. We're looking to get a grant to
I think instead of doing that, we'll do our own. Instead of letting somebody else do it, we'll do our own.
Yeah.
Because what it means is we update all our numbers, update all our contacts, update everything. There's no reason we can't do that, but this was part of a regional
Yeah, I would imagine it can't be all that difficult to do. It's just a matter of updating.
You know, you just gotta pull the numbers together.
Yeah.
Make you check, double-check all the contact information and everything, so.
But it's more than just that. It's identifying what your hazards are and not
Yes, but most of those have been identified.
They've been identified, yeah, in the original plan.
Just updating them, Jeff, that's all. We've identified a lot of that, so. If there's any new stuff, we update it.
Right.
What do you have for your key objectives for this next fiscal year?
Uh, next fiscal year is
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year, right, so obviously, you know, finish organizing over there, get that, that's our, our key thing, so. You know, and, and I should mention too, and I know you've mentioned it here before, is how the personnel took the initiative and
Painting.
Painting, you know, they, they power washed the whole inside of that station. They painted the ceilings, they painted the walls. Excuse me, and, and all in their own time too, you know, so. I think that whole project probably cost the town maybe two hundred dollars.
We even got the paint donated from RK Miles.
RK Miles donated paint. We had a scissor lift donated, the use of it, donated by Brockway Smith and also Bob Raymond, who owns Ten West Street. He had a scissor lift, so we had two of those over there running, you know, and the guys, you know, really worked hard and the place looks great over there, you know, so. And then we got the new gear racks that, you know, from the Kicks Country, you know, that bonfire we have in the fall that they have and we benefited from it. That's, that's what, that's almost nine thousand dollars right there. And funds, you know, that bought the gear racks and stuff, you know, and associations bought, you know, a lot of different items over there too, so. So it's actually been going well, so.
What other, again, back to objectives for fiscal year fifteen, what, what do you see as your main?
Well
Main targets?
My main target is just to start working towards retirement for me. I have a year left.
Disapproved.
I have a year left, so, you know, sixty-five, I'm out of there, so. So, you know, I've been meeting with the officers and going over different things and so forth and obviously, it's gonna come down to what this board wants to see, you know, also, so. I did find out that as far as the ambulance goes, that, and I just found this out today, was you have a Massachusetts license and Massachusetts went to the National Registry last year. And because I had registered as a national EMT back in the eighties, I was, I think it was fifteen bucks I was back in. And so my national license came back and said I expire in April of two thousand sixteen. My Mass license expires in April of two thousand fifteen, but there's gonna be a, a bridge, what they call it, a bridge over, so.
So you can still do EMT work?
So I can do EMT work up until, you know, technically, I'll expire in April of two thousand sixteen, so.
And on the fireside, it's, is, you can do administrative work, but you can't go out and fight the fire? Basically, is that the way it works?
At sixty-five?
Yeah.
No, you can't pay me after, after I've turned sixty-five, that's it.
That's it?
I'm done.
Okay, it's not special legislation or anything like that?
Well, you could get voted in like you did the police chief, but I don't see myself doing that. Sorry.
We've got a year that we have to do something with here.
Yes, yeah, so.
Figure out what we're gonna do.
Starting six months out at least.
Yeah. At some point in time, when it gets closer to like four or five months away, six months away, we should have a meeting and start with the officers and everybody and start talking about brainstorming on what we wanna do or what, what the thoughts are on the, on the fire department side.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Other than that, you know, getting this new software program going and so forth and
I was mistaken. I thought that software program accommodated both fire
The one we, the one we have now that we don't have
Fire and ambulance.
Uh, you, they used to use, the ambulance used to use Firehouse software and then they had to go to where they had to do online reporting. They had to swap to a different reporting system. And this, this package that we've had in the fire department, we've never had any updates or anything done to it, the one we run now, you know, so. So, I mean, I get the basic information. Technically, the fire department, you only have to report fires. But we report everything, just so statistically, they can keep track of everything, so. Like carbon monoxide alarms and if you have readings and whatever, so. They like to keep track of all that stuff, so I submit everything, so.
Thank you very much, Bill.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Bill.
I should mention too, that I know I talked to Ed about it too, that the Mass Fire Academy would be, they're actually using our facilities for a call volunteer program.
Training, me?
Yes, yes. It's actually a, it's a training program for call volunteer firemen. It's basically the same training that, you know, a full-time firefighter gets, only they do it in, you know, twelve weeks down the stove. Well, here, they do it two nights a week and Saturdays for six months, you know, so. So it's a big time commitment. They actually just had a meeting last night. It's three hundred and twenty hours, you know.
Oh, I thought it was a chief's association or something, you had a meeting last night?
Well, that's the chiefs that have students in this class. It was kind of an orientation for them. Three hundred and twenty hours, but some of it's now they're going to that e-blend learning, you know, so. But anyhow, so there'll be a lot of students around here for the next
Great.
four or five months, so. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll talk about the Firehouse door. If you wanna sit through this, Bill. I was gonna say, we're, we're on the agenda. We're, we're looking at that fire, the fire department door. I looked at minutes. Actually, the, the roof needs to be replaced over there and block walls, it was voted to take the block walls down and replace the door and the building inspector had to have the door done. Okay, so there was minutes that that stuff should have been taken care of. It hasn't. Okay, the only question that I, I have is, you know, the roof going over, it doesn't cover all the steps. And if it doesn't cover all the steps, then, like I said, who's gonna shovel the snow?
Don't know.
Get your snow shovel ready, or you will.
Well, no, no, I think, I think it would be nice to have, you know, I originally asked to have the door replaced. I mean, 'cause there's, there's probably an inch and a half gap in the bottom of that door, 'cause remember that was all heated space before?
Right.
You know, and that's not even an exterior door, you know, so. So I've asked for that since that building went down, you know, and that's where I stood at the moment. And I just assumed that that alcove would stay and just kinda dress it up a little bit, you know, but I know that roof leaks, that roof was new.
Well, it's, what these guys voted, I wasn't here at the meeting, but what was voted is that the door would be replaced, the walls would come down to a certain level and then the roof would be reshingled or whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
That's what it says on there.
Replace the overhang.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know how much, like I said, that, that roof should cover at least the steps going up in there. I don't care what you guys do with it. To me, I'd put up an eight-by-eight roof, make it look decent for what you're gonna pay, but but I guess you got your direction to go, go to unless you want something different. Brian, you got anything?
Now that the money's in place.
What's that?
I said, now that the money is in place for the new fiscal year, we can move forward.
Okay. All right. Is there any, is there any discussion on the, on the roof going over the stairs? I mean, you know, it's a safety issue, 'cause if the stairs and stuff get all ice and
Well, there is an overhang. There is an overhang. That's what it says.
Well, I think if you take a look at that whole thing, that roof stops at about the top landing. It doesn't include the two steps or the one step that's in there.
I think that goes right out.
Yeah.
All right, if it goes right out, then there's not a problem.
Yeah, I think it goes right out.
But there have to be some posts or columns that are gonna go back down onto the concrete.
Just needs a little dressing up.
Dress it up. Okay, so you'll take care of that, Phil?
Does the, does the wall now, the alcove now cover the steps, the entire steps?
I believe it does, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, you take a, you take a look at it and use your judgment.
Yeah. So, I mean, if that's the case, it's just a matter, like, instead of cutting it down and just, if it's already
Put a couple of posts on it?
Put a post and go.
Yeah, okay. All right, you want the, you want a copy of the minutes?
I have them somewhere.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Hi, Bill. Okay, Jericho Road. What's going on with Jericho Road? Just to bring Brian up to speed. Did you get?
Yep, I'm all set, yep, thank you.
Jericho Road is, I was a little surprised that the house was going up out of Jericho Road. 'Cause I thought the last we talked about it, we weren't fixing the road at all out there. And there's only sixteen-foot-wide road going out there and in the wintertime, it's all muddy and it's impassable. So for them to put a house out there, I wanna know how the fire department's gonna get out there. But I know you got a proposal to put, they're willing to put the road in, but we're, we're contributing some of that also. Or what they're asking to do.
Paul, just to know, I'll share what I know about the project, is that four or five lots were bought and the building inspector issued the right to build on those lots. So one house is built at the first lot and the fourth lot down is the second house, so. That's the concern, is because that's the last lot.
The first, first, first lot was a house there originally. So that, that road always was maintained to that first house, always. And that's as far as we maintained it.
Well, past where the sign says what it says on there is the last lot and that's where the gentleman is building the house today. So that's why this came about. That he tried to get down there in the springtime and he couldn't make it to the lot because of the conditions.
And how is he gonna get there this winter?
Well, as being
My question is, why was he
As being accepted by the building inspector to build, at buildable lots, the town has the right to maintain that parcel. I mean, to maintain that roadway, even if it is one rod in width, we still have to make it accessible.
So we do not have to make it accessible, because if I recall, Jeff, you did some research up on top of the mountain that the road that was up there and the guy wanted to build a house up on the Whately side above the Northampton Reservoir and there's nothing that we're obligated to put the road in.
Let me, let me be careful here, as to which, if, 'cause I may have to recuse myself.
We're talking about up on top of the reservoir, not the road.
Okay, so, you know, Massachusetts passed a law so that a community is not obliged to improve a road for safety purposes or anything else simply to allow someone to build. They're not allowed, they're not required to put in water, sewer, improve the, improve the road. They have, have that right to deny it. The law says, however, that when you have a public way, the town must maintain it safe and passable in all seasons.
Correct. Correct.
So you don't have to improve anything, but you have to maintain it safe and passable in all seasons.
So if they put, just they get out and put gravel in at their own expense, if that's what they want, they could do that. But I don't see us spending any more money out there, not planned. You're gonna, you're gonna get it all over town and you're gonna end up with a flood of stuff all over town. You start doing one, you're gonna start doing all. I'll tell you that much right now. So you're looking for trouble.
Just bringing this forward to the board where I, I, look, I need to recuse myself.
Well, we're going back, we're going back to Jericho Road, which Jeff is
I have, I have, just for the public, just for disclosure, I have a financial interest in property adjacent to, not, not this property, but adjacent to the section of Jericho Road that's being discussed, so. Let me recuse myself from the rest of that discussion, if you're gonna be talking about that other piece.
So when we get into that whole thing, I mean, Brian, what's your take on it?
I think I rely on whatever the Mass laws are, whatever our bylaws are in town, if we have any, and whatever the DPW director advises. I mean, we've gotta make it safe. If we're letting people build down there, then they've gotta be, we've gotta provide access to it.
I don't think they should have been given a permit based on that. I mean, that's, that's
We can't go back, though, so.
Can't go back. The walls are starting to go up and I was very surprised to see the building and I don't know why Stanley issued the building permit, but he did.
It's hard to, it's, it's, that's difficult to deny if
Why? It's based on?
If there is in fact adequate access to the lot, it's, it's pretty much impossible to deny a permit. I mean, you've, you've
Can't get there in the wintertime.
There's enough frontage.
Can't get there in the wintertime, Paul. You know how many, you know how many roads we have like that in town? There's a lot of roads like that in town.
Those, but I, I'm just saying that I've seen a lot of cases like this and I'm familiar with the law, you know, there's if you have, if it's a townway and you have the required frontage, there's adequate access, you know, it's an approval-not-required type of permit. An APR. I think the other good news that seems to be percolating from this is that the homeowners are willing to pay a reasonable sum towards this project.
Yeah, they're willing to contribute more than half of the project.
Yeah, which, which doesn't happen often, I wouldn't imagine.
With, with what I'm reading here, though, they wanna, they wanna go with either, is it hard pack or black? Explain to me what the hard pack is, okay, 'cause they wanna go, your comment was it goes, it should go right from Bridge Street out to there. Okay, my, my take on that, that road is solid enough to go from Bridge Street to that first house. That road is passable all year round. So the only thing we're talking about is from
And they're looking to pick it up from that point, from the high-low property to the last house. That's what they're looking to pay into. They're not looking to give any money for the first part of the improvement.
Yeah, but I think you
I mean, in the last, this is the latest email.
Okay, but then you sent out an email, something about you think it should go all the way from the beginning.
Well, I think that if we're gonna do it, let's do the whole thing. I mean, why do it? And then have something happen? That's my only concern, is that somebody can't get in there for some reason because of the condition of that road.
But it's passable all the way up to that first house automatically, year-round. Right now.
Right now.
Okay. There's nothing, there's nothing stopping anybody. We plow right up to that first house and turn around right into driveway. That's as far as we go. So why do anything more until, I mean, we've got other roads in town. We've got Mountain Road that people pay taxes to out there and, and there are full of houses out there that we don't, we're just starting to, to get to that stuff. So I don't wanna, I don't think we should be cutting, you know. I think if, to me, I think it should go from that last house to, to the first house. That's it. That's my take on it.
And that cost is twenty-one thousand. And they're willing to contribute fifteen.
Basically seventy-five percent.
So that leaves the town at a six-thousand-dollar price tag to do that section.
Yeah, but it's not, if it's only gravel, but they're asking for they're asking for more. What, what, explain to me what the aggregate, let's see.
They're looking to put down
Eight-six inches of hard pack. What's the hard pack? Blacktop?
No, not blacktop. It's just hard pack gravel.
It's processed gravel.
Right, reclaimed gravel, correct. Plus they're looking to put the fabric under it.
Filtered fabric. And we got a dilemma that the building inspector issued the permit. We're caught on this one here, but
You know as well as I know what the condition at road is in the springtime.
I know that. That's why I would have never issued the permit.
Now with the permit being issued and the house being constructed, my concern is if something happens out there.
Yeah.
And the town should be, is And the town should be, is, they're on the hook. It's a public way. They're on the hook to make it passable. You're not just going to go down there and grade it every other week and make it passable. Because soon as you get a little wet weather, you're not going to be able to drive through there.
No, what I'm stating, no, is it goes from the first house to the new house that's being put up right now.
And the price tag's $21,000 to do that. They're willing to contribute 15 into that part.
So we're going to, we're going to pick up seven out of your budget.
Out of the budget or out of the...
And we probably spend a couple thousand dollars grading it a year.
At least. I mean, now you're going to have to grade it more often with the houses in there. You have to make it passable. If something happens down there and you can't get an ambulance or fire truck in there, you're on the hook.
There's going to be more houses.
And then the next question I have is the boundary lines. Where's the boundaries?
The boundary's marked out. They had it surveyed. It's all set.
Okay, so I rolled down...
The only concern that I have, the only concern that I have is that that road cannot be crowned going into that field.
No, you can't push the water.
It all went the other way, where those houses are being built today. That's where the water went. So that's got to continue to be pushed that way because...
Yeah, the farmers have to be...
A landowner down there doesn't want the water on his property, and I don't blame him. So whether they have to cut something through somebody's lot there to make a slooshway or something, a shale or something in there, the water has to go that way that it originally went.
All right. I think, you know, at some point, we've got to talk to Kyle and let him know that when he gets into situations like this, he might have had other situations like this. And I don't think he, I don't think he would have issued the permit on this here, knowing that it was an unpassable road.
So is this looking, is this looking for something to move, is this a heads-up right now, or is this, are we looking, are you looking to get moving on this?
He's looking to move on it.
Oh, they're looking to move. They want to know what, you know, and I told them that, you know, I told the homeowner that I was going to bring it in front of the board to see which direction we're taking here, what we're going to contribute, if we're going to contribute, or are they just going to give the money up and do what they can do?
I'll make a motion that we contribute the $5,000, $7,000, whatever it is, a couple thousand, $6,000, whatever you said, okay, to go from that first house to the new house being built, just for safety reasons. 16 feet wide, that's it. And it's pitched on their property.
Absolutely.
And they do the work.
Yeah, I'll second that. And then I had a comment.
No, it's open for discussion.
Okay, I think if you haven't had that discussion with them as far as how the pitch, I think...
Yeah, I have.
Okay, just so right up front, we're not coming back afterwards.
Right, you know, and I know that, you know, I know who their contractor will be to do the road, so I will definitely have that discussion.
Okay.
Just have to remember here, I'm hesitating to even spend six because he's got three other building lots in between.
Absolutely.
Okay? And, you know...
And maybe that's a good thing, that they're in between.
Well, because it's getting us to get it over with.
Yeah, you're going from point A to B.
Well, I think there was a method to his madness here.
Well, I don't know about...
You know, read between the lines.
You know, I'm just happy, you know, and, you know, I really am grateful that they came up and said, you know, they're willing to contribute that much money into this, so...
Yeah. I mean, we're going to have to maintain it at some point, anyway, so...
They've walked away.
Right.
So our full share is going to be how much, six, how much?
Well, you know, the estimate's 21, so we'll nail them down for a price, you know, if they're going to kick in the 15, we're surely going to, you know...
We'll kick in how much?
It will be six, according to the estimate.
Okay. Move no more than six. Okay. Most been made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstained? So move. We're all set with you, fellas.
I just have one more thing. I just want to let the board be aware that all the wires over there on the playground are finally moved. Thanks to Brian giving us the contact for the phone, and me standing out here at 6:00 in the morning and flagging down G4, guy over here to come over there and take a look at it, because I can't talk to any more of them, people on the phone and getting nowhere. So he took care of it the next day. So they're all, everything's moved off the playground.
Good. Thank you, Phil.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Public safety building status.
Excuse me, did you have anything more on Mass Works?
No, I talked to Michael today, and, you know, we're definitely going to submit the grant, so, you know.
Okay, but back to the grant.
Yeah.
I would move that we also submit, if we do not get funding through the transportation bond bill, that we submit a Mass Works project for that piece of the water transmission line from the Brockway Smith area on Chester Street to Gore Avenue.
Okay, motion made. They're seconded?
Seconded.
Further discussion? No, that's, the only thing that we want to be careful on is that we're going to put in again this year to do Route 5?
Correct.
Okay, we don't want, you know, we'll put both of them in then.
No, yeah, they're two separate.
I'm hoping they don't look at it and say, well, we're going to give them this little tidbit here and then forget about Route 5.
The deadline for the Mass Works is, what, September? So...
I think it's August. I think you can turn it in now.
Yeah, you can turn it in now, but...
I think it's due in August.
I mean, the other one is just kind of a straightforward, we've been doing it for a few years now, but the other one, you know, we had that discussion today about, let's see how it plays out with the transportation bond, and if it doesn't go through, we're going to fire it right in there.
Okay.
So we'll have everything ready to do it, but we want to make sure, because we, like you said, we don't want the two pieces in there now if it's coming up for the transportation bond money.
And Stan Rosenberg mentioned to me that as soon as we put that grant in, he wants to know about it personally, not Mary Jane, he wants to know about it.
Okay, because, you know, there's a couple of things that, you know, I'd like to address with that. You know, I mean, we had a discussion a couple of years ago about the ag warehouse going in there.
Yeah.
That came from that side of the legislation, so I'd like to have that discussion to see where that lays, because that's a big piece. We've had the other gentleman who wants to do the solar housing.
Right.
Is that still on the table?
Yep, so we'll just have to get a letter in regards to that.
And there's one business looking to expand that we're aware of.
So, I mean, we really need the money, okay, to do this.
We need the support. We need the support from them people, is what we need.
And we want to put in there that we passed, the town accepted the expedited permitting process. That's supposed to give us additional points on Mass Works.
All right, so Mike needs to know that.
And I gave Phil that extract for the PBP C document concerning communities and households in poverty, where we rank right below Springfield and Hoyoke, third in 43 communities in the Pioneer Valley with the highest percentage of families in poverty. So, and that ties to housing, if housing's one of the...
Yeah. Okay, so anything else on the Mass?
So he's got some additional rationale to justification.
Anything else on the Mass? We'll put that on the next agenda, so we'll get an update from you.
Okay.
We'll keep that on until further notice.
Because Mike, you know, Mike said that he'll come in and speak on it again, so...
Okay. You have any...
Nope, nope, thanks, Phil.
Great, thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. There you go. Okay, Paul, your public safety building, what's the status?
Yeah, nothing to report. The ball is entirely in the contractor's court. You know, we sent off the documentation for substantial completion weeks ago, sent off the, signed off, you know, a revised payment application. We've heard nothing, I've heard nothing for, since our last meeting. So we're still sitting on $25,000 plus that we are obliged to pay the contractor as part of the contract, but they don't seem to be...
Plus minus the stuff that wasn't done.
Yeah, minus the stuff that wasn't done, but they don't seem to be in any particular hurry to get paid, so that's...
So we're waiting on them.
That's where we're at.
As long as, as long as we're not interfering there, so...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, center school.
Why is that so hard, I wonder? Center school.
So we have the final presentation from the consultants on this, and the advisory committee, you know, still wants to meet with the board. I think basically just to kind of explain, I think in a little more detail, you know, where they're coming from on this, so...
Okay.
Actually, I've scheduled them for our next, our next meeting in August. But, you know, we've been talking about, okay, well, where do we go from here? Well, you know, I think with all, with all the effort that's gone into this, and, you know, I think we should, we should be discussing having a special town meeting, you know, in the fall sometime, you know, to see if, you know, see how the townspeople feel about this.
Well...
You know, are they, you know...
We'll decide that after August meeting, when we talk to the committee.
Okay.
Well, okay. And I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Well, I, let me just recap for folks where we are in the movie. We had the outbrief, as Paul mentioned, from the contractor and the committee concerning center school and their site assessment and proposed development options. Key conclusions, we need about 4.1 million to simply bring it up to required maintenance and repair and code standards. They propose selling the building and a section of the playing field to a developer for multi-use housing as the most feasible use of that area. Some 40 units, housing units, are needed to make the project viable. They're proposing to retain a conservation easement on the 2.5 acres that's down along the river. They're saying also retain control of access to the dyke. And they're proposing that the town secure the funds and remediate at its expense the environmental issues. It's about $120,000 that they had identified. And that giving, giving, you know, we've looked at using it, selling it, leasing it before. It's really down to along, following this line of thinking or recommendation or else tearing it down. That's about the only thing.
Raising it and put a parking lot in there.
Yeah.
You have open...
Or you could retain, tear it down and keep it for, as recreation or other town purposes. So the way ahead, one, we need to meet with the center school committee members who are unable to attend the outbrief. But remember, every one of them signed on to what was being proposed. So there's no...
There's no discord.
There's no separate group that has a different view of the recommendation. They all supported and signed on to the recommendation. So we ought to meet with them. We ought to schedule a special town meeting, present two options, housing and/or demolition. If housing, then we need the funds to remediate the...
Well, Paul said that...
Environmental.
Yeah.
And we need funds also to take care of relocation of the school's playing field. If we tear it down, then we need funding for tearing it down. And maybe in advance, we hold a public hearing to kind of go over the options.
Well, I, well, yeah, that's the other, one of the other things I wanted to get into, I think, you know...
Informational kind of session and say, here's where we are...
Need a couple of forums before the town meeting.
Here's what we're going to do at town, special town meeting.
You know, get people up to speed as what, what the realities are, yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's really, I think that the purpose of the town meeting is, you know...
A vote.
It's a vote, it's a vote to authorize the board of selectmen to sell. That's, that's what the real question is.
Well, then the second article will be to tear it down.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Well, and then we need money.
Yeah.
We need money as well. We need money for the environmental cleanup. We need money for the relocation of the playing field.
Well, there's, there's anything.
No, remember the outbrief that they said, since we caused it, there's very little, very little likelihood that we get money for the remediation, for the environmental stuff.
Yeah, there is some disagreement among the, among the experts on that.
Okay.
So I think, you know, the big, the big question is to sell or not to sell.
And then they're funding associated with whatever option.
All right. So the bottom line is book, book the committee in for next month.
Yeah, yeah, I've already done that.
And then we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, ambulance billing policy.
Yeah, last time we talked about this, you know, I think we've got the policy pretty much...
Let's back up.
Please, please, I'm speaking.
Yes, excuse me. Let's, we haven't finished this other topic.
What?
Are we going to, on the center school, other than just talking, are we going to plan for a special town meeting?
Well, next week, next month, when we talk to the committee, then we'll figure out what we need to do. Either go to town meeting or, or whatever, or do an annual town meeting. I mean, if it's...
Oh, you mean wait till...
Wait, yeah. But I'd like to hear from the committee before we make any decisions on that. I don't want to set up any kind of a meeting or anything like that unless I talk to the committee and find out exactly what their feelings are.
Sure, yeah.
It makes sense to me, but...
I mean, yeah, I mean, we've been talking about having a special, and I think this question, you know, serves a special, but hey, it's been sitting there for how long, you know?
Let it sit there for a few more months.
No, you can certainly wait till the spring, but that's your call.
I think after we meet with the advisory group, we might have a feel for, you know, which route we should take, whether it should be fall or wait. And I think, well, I, part of that special town meeting also is, if I'm not mistaken, is because the building at one of the town meetings passed was declared to be a town building.
It is. The school's...
So therefore, we're going to be looking for the authority as the board of selectmen to take it out of, you know, with the town's guidance, to give us permission to then move forward.
Right.
Right? I just wanted to make that clear, right now, it's, it can only be used for town purposes.
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't, you know, I don't know if people remembered that that vote took place a few years ago, so, thank you.
I'm sure once it goes back to town meeting, it'll all come back again.
Oh, yeah.
We'll get there.
Okay, ambulance billing policy.
Yeah, you posed a question to me last time we met about this. I mean, I think the policy's pretty much all set, we just need a little more guidance on the, you know, the hardship guidelines. So you asked me to find out what Amherst and North Hampton does, and so I, I got ahold of Steve Gahn, the ambulance director, and asked him to get me that information, but I haven't heard back from him yet, so...
So we're tabling this?
You can just table it for now.
We still need to, do you know, does anyone know how to read this poverty guideline?
It doesn't make sense. We talked about this before. It doesn't make sense.
Well, I'm sure it makes sense, it's just we don't, we don't know how to read it.
And the other thing is...
If it's a household size is one, 100% disabled, you get $11,000.
Is that, is that what that column is? Disabled?
That's the way I'm looking at it.
It'd be 200% disabled, or 400% disabled, but...
The 100, the 100% is, that's, that's the poverty level. And then those other figures are, you know, and they use these in different federal formulas, you know, you know, 200% above the poverty level, 300% above the poverty level, that's what, that's what those are.
Okay, but how would you use them?
So to me, to me, if somebody were making 22,000 at the 200% level, 22,980, all right, that's a poverty level, and, you know, I would tend to give an abatement for that.
Yeah.
Okay? But somebody making 34,000, I think they'd be well enough to afford the bill.
I just, all I care about, if we're going to establish a policy, it ought to be...
We need to know how to interpret the thing.
It ought to be clear on its face.
Well, but, but what you can do here, these are the, these are the dollar figures, the formulas. Then let's say if we decided to go with the 200%, and that's the guideline that we follow. So now you've got a household size, one, two, three, if you've got eight people in a family, under the 200%, they could literally make 79,260, and they would still qualify for the abatement. Okay, that's basically how I, I agree this.
Yeah.
Okay?
You're on the right track there.
And that's, the 200% is where I would, I would focus on as far as where somebody were in the poverty level. $22,000 a year is not very much money.
Not very much money at all.
And the other thing, well, we can talk about that. The other thing was the questionnaire. There's no schedule of rates and questionnaire supposed to be attached, and there's no questionnaire. So I don't know what, what the questionnaire is, you know, how we're gonna.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that needs to be developed.
Okay.
Because if somebody's looking for an abatement, well, they're gonna have to fill out a form.
Form's gonna have to be filled out? You got the guideline?
Right.
I mean, we could move on that if you wanted to include that. I wouldn't have a problem making a motion to follow the 200%.
I'd, I'd like, well.
Yeah, let me, let me hear back from Steve.
Ready? Okay.
Not at all.
Let me hear back from Steve.
Okay, so it's.
Why don't you, why don't you create a policy, Paul, without.
Poor guy's trying.
Without, well, it'd be, it'd be a form, okay? And it would say, and to be eligible for the abatement, you have to be, you know, at the 150, 200, whatever.
Yeah.
Just put a percentage, and then we'll fill, fill in the blank, using this, whatever we decide on.
Yeah.
But that way, we have a form out there if somebody wants to fill it out, and then the only thing we're gonna have to do is figure out where they, where, where we're willing to give them an abatement.
Yeah, where you draw the line.
Yeah.
You, you borrowed this from another community.
Yeah.
Be helpful to know what, what they're using and.
Yeah, well, that's.
Is there a rationale?
Jenny, I, I, the assessors don't have an abatement.
He checked with the assessors.
The assessors don't have an abatement form?
Oh, they have an abatement form, but it.
Well, use one of theirs and doctor it up, that's all.
Well, I could, but, you know, they, they have no written guidance.
We, we had.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure what's going on, but not my department anymore.
Yeah, Steve's gonna get back to me with some info from Amherst and Northampton.
So the only thing we have to do is pick where, what were the poverty levels we want to be under. Then it will, then it will work. Cause I'm about to put that to bed.
Yes.
Okay, legal services. Looked at all the legal attorney stuff.
I move to accept the Brackett and Lucas proposal to provide town council services to the town of Hatfield, Massachusetts.
Second.
Well, second, it's open for discussion.
And make the recommendation based on really three factors. One, our current town administrator has had some years of experience working with them, and they've been, had a good relationship with them and found their, their work to be satisfactory and responsive. Second, their size. If you look at somebody like, what's this, what's the?
Copeland Page?
Copeland Page, it's a large firm. You know, where would we rack and stack in terms of responsiveness to our needs versus a smaller firm who would be depending on us as well as, as their other business? I, I would just suspect that smaller would be more likely to give us the more, more responsive answers to our, our issues and questions. And finally, because of cost, it's, they're cheaper than all the other three, 145 versus 190 or 175.
Right. The two that I picked were Copeland Page and, and Brackett and Lucas. Brackett and Lucas also charges $55 per hour per paralegal. All right, the other ones don't charge anything. It's part of the, part of the package.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So that's, that's why, you know, and I looked at Copeland Page, they brought a full variety of, I know, we, we called, I forget what Julia, her name was, Judy, from, okay, she didn't have any, any, on the board health side with this smoke problem.
Right, yeah.
She didn't have any input on that.
No.
So she's gonna have to research stuff like that. Okay? I don't know of Copeland Page, I mean, I was looking at the law services, and there's pages of, of stuff that they have. I mean, it's impressive the way they set it up. So we're gonna pay a little more, probably, you know, even though it's the cheapest one, we're gonna pay a little more. Okay, by doing research? Well, so.
I think, well, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, I think with the proposal.
So what, what's already been motioned is if we enter into a, in a financial arrangement over a contractual period, one, two, three years, I would imagine those fees would come down because it says, you know, there's a paragraph right in here that if, they're willing, basically willing to work on the rates if it's a long-term, longer-term contract.
With town council, there's no contract typically. If you're not satisfied.
You get rid of them.
You just get rid of them.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that you can.
Lower the rate.
Yeah, I did see that.
If you want to.
They will go back and they'll see what we had for, for, for legal fees over the past three years, see what we spent, and then they'll come up with a dollar figure, and we'll just pay them by a quarter or a month or whatever they charge, okay? I mean, I, I like that option. Okay, that way you're locked into one figure and, and that's all it's gonna cost you. So if we do go.
The, the other thing I thought was, you know, I look back over the time I've been here, and how many times we've had to go outside of Attorney O'Neill? We went to a personnel specialist.
Right.
Personnel law for just a couple of issues. One, we won't get into the specifics, but, and we went to Copeland Page when we had a, actually, dealing with the potential lease of the Center School in a previous life. But the times that we've gone to specialists in particular areas have been just, you count them on your couple of fingers. So, and we could still do that with, if, if necessary, with Brackett and Lucas.
What I would like to see, and, and I don't have, like I say, I don't have any, either one is fine, okay? Brackett and Lucas, they're a smaller company, but they, they may give us more for our money, okay? But I'd like to see what Brian said also, and what's in the contract here, that, what they would charge us for a, you know, by a quarter or by a, a monthly service. Let's see.
Okay.
Now, there's no, nobody put in here, there's a retainer. No such thing as a retainer.
There's none in there.
There's no retainer on any of these.
No, no, and, and.
It's just a dollar figure, that's all we're paying.
Well, yeah, I found that to be very unusual with your last arrangement for legal services, cause there was a quarterly retainer and, and there was also being charged hourly. It was very confusing looking at the bills and, you know, there were a lot of hours that
Yeah.
we weren't charged for, and so I don't know how all that worked out. It, you know, I remember calling him up and, could you please explain this to me?
So there is no retainage on anything here?
No, no.
Just a straight hour figure.
I've never heard of that before. I've never heard of that before.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor to go with Brackett and Lucas?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Motion carried, thank you.
Now, you're gonna notify.
Yep.
Everybody.
Send, send everybody a letter thanking them for their.
No, I meant, well, that's good too.
Thanking them for the proposals.
But there's a staff that, he's the focal point for.
Yeah. Let them write that down. Letter, letter to all, everybody that submitted, and then also a letter to all the staff that the new town accountant, I mean, town attorney will be Brackett and Lucas. And to use Brackett and Lucas, they have to call your office, okay, let you know that they're, they're contacting them and at least a reason.
Everybody, everybody seems to know that already because.
Put it in writing.
People have, have come to me and.
Also, there should be a letter going out to everyone about Kyle Scott.
Oh.
Okay, let everybody know that the building inspector has changed in his name and, and his hours and so on.
And one other, one other thing that Paul and I just talked about earlier, but Paul's gonna have a chat with Bill O'Neill about anything he might have in work. Remember the solar thing he was liaison on that?
Everything over.
And do a handoff.
I was surprised. I, I mean, the, the last company I wasn't impressed with, but to see Copeland Page come in at that price, that was, I was surprised at that dollar figure. I thought they'd be a lot higher than what they were.
Oh.
Copeland Page. They've been around for a long time.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of places that they.
Lot of overheads.
They do a lot of volume, apparently.
So we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes.
Okay. I mean, everything so far, she's been really good to us and.
Yeah, no, you know.
The fees have been reasonable and a lot cheaper than what, than what we're used to.
Yeah. Yeah, the, you know, on that, on the outdoor furnace, you know, they, that was an issue they were not familiar with. But everything else that I've been asking them, you know, they've been pretty responsive. And from what I understand, you know, the ZBA had an issue too, and the planning board, so I think she, she sees me on everything. So, yeah, I think, you know, thus far, I don't think anybody's had any problems.
Okay, Hampshire Cog, accounting proposal.
I move to approve our execution of fiscal year 15 contract for professional services between the Hampshire Council of Government and town of Hatfield for accounting services as submitted.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for a discussion.
Sure.
Now, there is one change in what they've proposed here. But one, and that is, in our plan of action, we said, well, there's several changes from what they originally proposed, but then we went back based on discussions with the town accountant and others to get what we thought were the most important things covered down. I specifically addressing the shortcomings in the audit, resolving some of the longstanding issues about publication of this internal management control and accounting policy documents, and coming up with something cost-effective. But in our plan of action, we said that we were gonna do collector's receivable reconciliation monthly, and Paul suggests that that's.
Overkill.
Unnecessary, that quarterly is.
Where quarterly is.
Is a major step forward.
Yeah, and I think it's pretty much standard operating procedure.
So, so that, that's changed from monthly to quarterly, but the rest are.
Okay, the concern that I have is responsibilities of the town, technologically, current software, soft right.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have, I don't believe we, we have that, do we, Paul?
Ah.
Question, I don't think we have it, but might be something.
Ah, I'm trying to, we talked, we specifically, I'm trying to remember, cause we specifically talked about that, and Roland, you know, from the cog, you know, I can't remember what we, we have in here, but it sounded like it was, it was a software that he was familiar with, and I think it's the same software that some of the other towns that they work with use.
But it specifically says that if the town does not provide technologically current software and/or hardware, it agrees to pay a 25% surcharge.
Hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
So before I would sign any contract, I want, I'd like that clear.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me, I'll call Roland tomorrow.
Because if we gotta go out and spend $100,000 for software.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I don't think so, but, uh, let's see if there's anything else that I had here. That's the only thing I had. Yeah, that, that was my main concern.
Yeah, that's a good one.
About the software.
Okay.
Other than that, we could vote on it contingent on the.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
On the outcome.
That's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, wanna change the motion? How do I wanna do that? amend the motion? Amendment to include research on the technologically current software, and if we do have it, there's no problem. If we don't have it, what's the 25% charge, and how much is the software gonna cost? And if it's gonna be a dollar figure over $2,000 and it's gotta come back to the board, something like that?
What, do you have any, any guesstimate?
No, I don't. I mean, I'm not sure with the way, the way the, the scope has been pared down, quite frankly, I'm not even sure if the software is even an issue at all.
Cause they're doing reconciliations.
Yeah.
They don't need it for that. They're doing a development of a couple of manuals, the financial policy manual and internal management control program, doing risk assessments.
It was more about. It doesn't specify 25% surcharge of what?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, 25%.
Can, I guess what I'd like to do is, can we table it to our next meeting?
Sure.
Well, we're not here until.
Oh, yeah, it's a month away.
We're not even here until.
It's a month away, the next meeting.
All right, let me, let me go back to the minute. I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
To include, have Paul check to see if we have technologically current software. If not, and we had to purchase it.
Cost.
The cost up to $2,000. I would say go ahead with it, and we're covered, all right?
Sure.
If it's more than that, then come back to the board and we'll deal with it.
That's fine.
That sounds good.
That's my move, my amendment.
I think it's a non-issue at this point, but.
All right.
But it's.
All those in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go.
Yeah, well, subject to what you just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, it's very clear, I'm surprised.
Yeah, you're right. Well, you asked about cost, it was only about $3,000.
I saw that. It's 3,328.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is what I was looking.
That's manageable.
That's fine. Okay, expedited permit.
Yeah, I've got some procedures here that I bagged from another town.
Plagiarism doesn't count now.
Yeah. So this is, you know, one, one, one other step towards, you know, implementing this whole thing. So this is just for information purposes right now. You know, unless you're inclined to adopt it now.
What's the timeframe, Jeff? You had that.
120 days from 13, what was it, 13 May?
13 May.
13 May, 13 June, July, August, September.
September?
May 13, June 13. Yeah, so we're.
120 days.
Yeah.
So by September 20, what'd you say, September 13th?
Yeah, mid-September.
All right, so let's bring this up at our next meeting. That way it'll give us a chance.
Yeah.
And make any additions or corrections, and put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, now, just to, we covered this before, but I'm not sure everybody's on board. The obligations. We must identify a qualifying parcel as a priority development site and obtain permission of its owner, if private, for participation in the program. Did we ever get from?
No.
Well, we need that, we need that document from.
If anybody's interested.
When you talked to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, did you?
I didn't ask for that.
You didn't ask for that.
I thought we could just get that from our lawyer or attorney. Just a sample agreement, a vanilla, that we could just put in the.
Yeah.
The parties in the parcel. Within 120 days, the community must appoint a single municipal point of contact for streamlining permitting.
Which you did.
Amend local rules, regulations, bylaws to comply with 180-day permit timelines. Determine and make available the requirements for each permit. So, people like the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, Building Inspector, they got to get their act together and define how they're going to do this. It's not all that hard, because we do it already, but just need to document it. Establish a procedure for identifying necessary permits for a project. Establish a procedure for determining completeness of the required submissions. And after 120-day phase-in period is complete, the town must render permitting decisions on priority development sites within 180 days. So, it's just documentation required here. So, I would recommend we come back to this at our next meeting.
That's all we're going to do. You got homework, review this document.
I gave him everything I had.
Okay.
We talked about Mass Works.
HR policy.
Okay.
Went through, you corrected some of the stuff in here, Paul.
Yeah, yeah, this is, you know, this is all pretty, just kind of updating.
Well, do you want us to approve it as you go, or do you want?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do it all at once, okay? Let's have it all, because there may be something in a follow-on that might tie back to something here.
Yeah, well, let me.
In this section here, all he's essentially done is changed down the.
Administrator.
Administrator.
Right, it's cleaning up.
Yeah.
To give direction to the proper person. And there's other things that we might need to get cleaned up, but.
Yeah, this is not the whole document, it's only a couple pages.
Right.
Yeah, this only pertains to Paul's stuff. That's what he's trying to clean up right now. This is not the whole, what we should do is.
As my, as my cover memo says, "The town's human resource policies need some updating clarifications and corrections. I propose we handle this in bite-sized chunks over the course of the next few months." There are a few areas where I think I will need to get the Human Resources Advisory Committee involved, but most are just pretty routine stuff that we can handle on our own. So, yeah, this is the first installment, and, you know, this is a, I've already gone through the whole document and, you know, marked it up all the way through. But, yeah, some of it, some of it will still need a little more investigation, but I thought we'd just get started with it, you know, with this tonight.
The deal, well, again.
I mean, I don't have a problem piecemealing it and then just, you know, it's nice to have the whole document in front of you and get it all done, but if you want to just.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, well, it's rather lengthy.
On the spot here.
I don't know how we would do it all in one meeting.
Well, you're not going to do it all in one meeting, and it's going to take a series of people, because it involves a lot of people, a lot of departments.
Right, right.
So, it's not just, it's just not our department, it's everybody's department. Okay, the town clerk, the town treasurer, everybody that has a handle on this stuff here. So, it's multiple, you know, you might want to send a copy of, a copy of the personnel policy, get a copy for everybody, and see if all departments will update their portion of it. It might be a way to go, instead of us trying to do it, because I don't know what the clerk's doing, what her new ideas are, or whatever, or.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, there's sections in here, you know, that deal with payroll and stuff like that, which needs, definitely needs to be worked on. But most of it is just, you know, internal clarifications, like, actually, Jeff and I were just talking about this this morning, like on resignations and retirement. Well, there's a section in there that says, you know, you were required to give two weeks' notice, whether you resign or you retire. But then, you know, 10 pages later, it says, expected that you are, you give three months if you're looking to retire. So, you know, okay, well, you know.
It should be three months, because you need to give us advance notice on that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a lot of stuff like that.
Yeah. But that's something for the treasurer to correct on their end, it's not up to us to correct that.
Well, they're your personnel policies.
It's ours, this is our policy, period.
It's your policies.
Yeah, but I want to make sure that we're doing it according to their department, can't leave them out.
You gotta.
We'll bless it, you're right, we'll bless it, but I don't want to leave anybody out.
No, 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 I'll need input from several departments.
If anything, highlight the issues, if you want to go through and highlight the issues, and then if they agree with them, and they might have some different wording, then let it so be.
Yeah.
I think most, thank you, Paul, and I think most of this first part would, would be acceptable to, or would be, all the departments would use this first part that you've gone through.
Yeah.
You know, this covers everybody.
Yeah.
And then beyond that, it's probably going to depend more on the various departments.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, this was all, you know, fairly simple, straightforward stuff, I just want to get moving on this.
I don't have a problem taking, you know, accepting just this part, just to get it corrected.
Yeah.
Well, the only, well, the only, there's only two changes here, one changing administrator assistant to town administrator, got that, there's no issue there. I did mention this to Paul, he says it's mentioned somewhere else, but this was a legal fix first time around on paragraph 3, page 1, oh, excuse me, yeah, page 1, section 3, paragraph 3, that the provisions do not create an employment contract or other employment obligation of the town.
Yeah.
Paul cited it as redundant, but I couldn't find above that where it was.
Under section 3, paragraph 1, the last sentence, it basically says the same thing.
Well, guarantee, well, anyway, all I'm saying.
Basically saying it in other words.
Yeah, it's the same, you know, it's the same thing.
All I'm saying is, that was a legal fix first time around in 2008.
So, do we want to move forward and just correct this portion?
Yeah, just approve it, you know, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the changes to the HR policy as provided by the town administrator.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Can I just ask one question? So, is the plan to come back, are you kind of going right in order of the manual?
Just work our way through it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we have hundreds and hundreds of policies in the schools, and it's a long, tedious task, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good luck to you.
Yeah, well.
It's just, you know, a word here can change the entire meaning, so thanks for going through all this, but I just, maybe we can do a piecemeal, might make all our lives a little easier.
Yeah, you know, don't want to spend up, you know, hours at a meeting, you know, going through this. I know I've been through this before, and I made all these corrections to a previous board of selectmen, and gave them copies of it for them to look at. Well, guess what? Then, none of them ever looked at it. So, it sat there in limbo until a new selectman came in and said, "I'll work with you on this," and the other guy said, "You guys do it, and whatever you come up with, we'll approve it." So, that's how it ended. So, that process didn't work.
Okay, Green Community.
One thing, at the end of this, you know, we're approving something here, but clearly, at the end of this, we need a legal review of the whole document.
Yes, yeah.
So, then it becomes effective, not, it doesn't piecemeal become effective, it becomes effective when the whole thing's done, legal review is going to be completed.
Yeah, and actually.
And that's where I look at it, anyway.
Racket and Lucas already has a copy.
I understand what you're saying, yeah, you know, but I'm just, I'm just saying, Paul needed these changes for his portion, that's fine. But overall, once we complete it, you're right. Okay, you want to have town council.
Yeah, absolutely.
Review the whole document.
And then it becomes adopted document.
Right.
Okay, Green, Green Communities grant.
Okay.
What's going on with that?
Okay, just to recap, you know, we submitted a.
They said we were going to be happy with the outcome.
Yes, that's it. Yeah, I think we will be, though, I don't know exactly what it is going to be yet. So, just to recap, we submitted a grant application for a little over $160,000 to do six energy conservation projects on various town buildings. So, I got a call from Jim Berry, who's our, the regional rep to DOER, inviting me to a meeting this coming Monday in Ashland. And I'll, and only, you know, the only people who are getting invited are people are getting grants, so we're getting a grant. I'll know how much.
A big check on.
I'll know how much on Monday. And I guess they're, you know, they'll have the contracts all ready to pass out then, and so.
Okay, good.
Soon as I know, I'll let you know.
Super. Okay, old business, unanticipated new business?
We have one appointment.
Well, there's a couple of old business items here. Well, this isn't exactly old business, but let's, with the new building inspector, I drafted a contract. He's already looked at it.
My question is, is it the same as Stanley's? That's what we have basically agreed upon.
Only in that the Stanley's contract was a little more lucrative than this, just in terms of, well, he got a, he's got, had 25% sick leave payout in his contract, as opposed to 10%, which is in the HR policies.
Okay, this is a question that I was going to have for you. Part-time positions are only, get half-time, part-time, half-time credits, okay? Like, other people get a day off, a part-timer only gets a half a day off. I believe that's what it says in the.
It says that in the personnel policies.
So, it's half of whatever.
Hang on, hang on, because I looked at that and I said, "You can't do that."
Why can't you? They only work part-time.
Well, if.
And we're paying them.
Under state statute, for benefit purposes, if you're working 20 hours a week, that qualifies you for full-time benefits.
Okay, it's full-time benefits. So, it doesn't matter what our personnel policy says, then?
No, because I talked to Edwina about that, she said, "No, we don't do that."
Okay, all right, that was just a question that I had, because that's stuck in the back of my head.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that needs to get changed.
Okay, all right. Because it does have to go by state statute.
Yeah. So, anyways, he's good with this contract, so just take a look at it and.
Well, are these our copies?
Those are your copies, yeah.
You should email them to us, at least we could have looked it over at a time before he signed it.
Yeah. Well, I figured, you know, I wasn't expecting anybody to take action on this tonight. So, this is just, you know, we can deal with this at the next meeting.
The guy is working without a contract, it's not.
Oh, no, he's accepted.
Yeah, 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 he's fine with this.
Oh, okay.
Soon as you sign, he'll sign, or he'll, you know, I can make him sign.
All right, and one of the things that I have is, he asked if there was a different room that he'd like to move into, and I said I'd bring it to the board, because the thinking was, if the police department is out of there, maybe put him in that, fix that room up, and then stick him in that one.
Okay, remember when.
I know that.
Department of Public Safety Accretural Access Review Board, they gave us a waiver on fixing up those rooms on our commitment that the occupants were moving out.
Yeah, but I'm only talking some paint, Jeff, I'm not.
Oh, no, I'm talking about.
And there's tile, it's only a paint on the ceiling, there's tile on all four walls.
I don't know if the door is compliant, or, or other, I don't know what else.
I'm not looking, I'm just looking to use. Take them out of this there and put it over there, that's it, just, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with them just doing it, okay, and getting a bigger office.
So, did you, did you mention that to him, or did he ask?
Asked about, because he thought he'd like to move upstairs, and I said, "Well, that wouldn't be a wise decision, because all this traffic is downstairs."
Well, the elevator would be there anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true, so, and he liked the idea of moving into a bigger office. I didn't see a problem, because it's same, we're not changing nothing, maybe just a paint on the ceiling.
Well, he and I talked about the possibility of him, you know, either moving into the police area, or the fire, the old fire.
Fire, you don't want to move anybody in there, that's nasty.
Too funky, okay. So, maybe the police.
So, that would give them more space, anyway.
So, there's that, so there are a couple other things here, we have an appointment.
Do we have a problem with them just moving the stuff into the other side?
I don't.
Well, we can, we can mention it in our September report to the AAB.
I don't even, I don't.
I don't know if we really even have to, because you're just.
Well, it's a change of.
Using a room, okay?
I know, I know where you're headed here. I don't have any problem with going in there.
All right.
Do whatever works out best for him.
Right, that's exactly right, so.
So, this is, I got a couple of old business items here, we have a resignation letter that needs to be accepted, and we have an appointment that needs to take place.
Mr. Holesley?
This is.
We have a couple of resignations, right?
Oh, that's right, we've got those other ones.
Here. I move to accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Robert T. Bartlett as our Assistant Building Inspector, Town of Hatfield.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I'd like to send a letter of thanks to Bob for the years, you know, or for the time that he spent helping us out, very appreciative. And that's all. Anybody else have any comments? All those in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Aye. And you both?
I move to reappoint as a member of the Open Space Committee, Mr. S, I can't read the name.
Talonsis, Talonsis?
Talonsis.
Talonsis, I think.
Yeah, Talonsis.
And this is a two-year term, if I recall.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Question that I have is, this is an open spot?
Yes, there's two open spots.
Okay.
And I think, I think he's been on for ages.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Also have a police chief sent a letter here stating that Officer Leepin resigned, his position as Hatfield Police Officer, take another position, another county, or another in Montague, he can't belong to both of them, so.
Motion to accept resignation with regret.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
So, I'll move, I'll let Tom know that, that's all right, we already did that. And also Officer Gonzalez resigned his position, he's moving to Florida. So, Patrick Gonzalez, their motion to.
Motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Gonzalez.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
I just want to comment, we have two resignations from the police department, but they're both moving on to full-time jobs, so, good for them.
Good for them.
Okay, is there any other unanticipated business, any other business?
Well, I've, right on time. I've got, I've received this letter from Mr. Stephen Brunette. He's got an issue here with the town trees clogging up his drains. So, he apparently got ahold of Phil, and Phil told him to write a letter, and he says, "I was wondering if it's possible if the town would install new drain lines and also look at the main pipes inside the house that are original." So, I think we, you know, I think we certainly need to talk to Phil about this. So, I think we just, you know, table this till the next meeting. I just got this letter yesterday. I just got this letter yesterday.
Has, has Phil mentioned anything to you, Paul, or not yet?
No, he has not.
Okay, so it sounds like Mr. Brunette and Phil have at least had a conversation.
Yeah.
If you recall, Brian, you weren't on the board, but what we, what we voted on quite some time ago is that the town is responsible from the town line to the sewer line. That's the town's responsibility. And anything from the town line to the house is the homeowner's responsibility. That's the way it was voted on, and that's what we're maintaining, unless it changes at some point. So I don't know, it's just for everybody's information.
Right, so we may need to provide, produce that information, or bylaw, or whatever, however that's there.
Policy.
Policy.
Whatever.
All right, we may have to just have Phil send the letter out. Phil was here, so he knows what the procedure is, so. Okay. The other thing is, just want to bring to everybody's attention that the Department of Agricultural Resources, Mike Cahill, he appointed Scott Palmeroy as Inspector of Animals for City and Town Hatfield. Okay, so Scott's been appointed by the state and been approved. Okay. Moving along. And this here, just information for the building inspector's position and that kind of stuff. All right. Anybody else have anything else? If not, we'll move into our year-end, well, we still got another 10 minutes here. We have a couple more people.
Well, we can, we can do it right now.
Darrell isn't here.
Oh, that's right, Darrell's not here, yeah.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break? And then we'll come back.
Sounds good. Yeah, Darrell will be here about 5:00 after, or so, I figure.
I'm gonna wrap this up by 7:00.
That's late.
This is pretty good, I just stay here.
Okay, welcome back. We're into the last segment of the, of our meeting tonight. We have a meeting with the Finance Committee to look at the budget and do transfers from deficit to the accounts that were in the deficit. So if, everybody's got the page in front of them, going down through and-
Do you want to go through and just explain some of the accounts that are maybe not, I don't want to say red flag, but just-
I was gonna go down through them all.
Okay.
You know, I mean, what we have here. All right, Town Hall Informational Tech, Tech Information, this is our IT computer account. It's over by $11,009.23. Town Accountants was over $728. Treasurer, $504. Elections were $325. Building man, Building Maintenance was $11,232. Insurance was $1,407. Facilities Maintenance was $5,422. Streetlights were over by $262. Town Mechanic repairs were $12,611 over. Historical, $184. Hampshire County Retirement was over by $7,161. And Medicare or Social Security, $957. Total of $53,418. In the salary part, Council and Agent Transportation was over by $6,377. Inspection Services were over by $5,897. And Cemetery was $491, I'm sorry, $72 over. A total of $12,346.
I have one, Craig. Cross one off, the Elections, for $325. I talked with people who I thought probably wouldn't be overdrawn, and, and one of her invoices, she wanted to split it between Elections and Clerk, but they both got posted to Elections. So I crossed that one off, which changed the total expenses to $53,093. And the total deficit to $65,439.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure, Darrell.
So I, it just seems like that, I think it's worth an explanation on some of the bigger ones, the Town Hall Infotech, the Public Building Maintenance, the Town Mechanic, those are some sizable numbers, and probably worth some explanation.
The IT was due mainly for the renovation work in here. It wasn't figured in, the cost, when we redid all that, bringing the IT stuff over, especially to the ambulance building and stuff like that, and then in here. And what else do you have to add?
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, all the computers had to get moved, you know, from the old offices to the new offices. Likewise, the computers needed to be set up in the, the new public safety building. Not to mention, all the phones had to be moved, new phones had to be brought in for this project, and over there. So there was a, between Normando Technologies, which does our phones, and Paragus IT, which does all our IT work, you know, there was, there was a lot of work that we knew was gonna have to get done, but there was just no way to figure out what, you know, how much it was gonna cost in the end. But that's, that's the reason why it, you know, it went over so much this year.
And, and I guess it's just kind of interesting to me that it's in Town Hall Infotech, and it's not in the Town Hall Renovation Project, or the Ambulance Fire slash Renovation Project. I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, it wasn't, the contract documents that were created for both projects did not include any of that work. Yeah.
And I believe the Public Building Maintenance was part of that whole mess also.
Oh, that's, that's right, yeah.
So the two accounts actually fit. You're looking at $22,000, roughly $22,000.
Well, there's some things, there's a dehumidifier for COA unexpected, that's $5,000.
That was five grand.
Right.
There were door repairs on the-
Facilities Maintenance.
$5,000. There's 10 grand right there.
On the Hampshire County Retirement, um, we budgeted, if you pay it upfront at the beginning of the year, there's a 5% discount. So that's what was budgeted, but it never got paid at the beginning of the year, so.
Paid in two payments, beginning of the year and the middle of the year.
So we lost our 5% discount.
This year, are we gonna pay it all upfront, so we get the discount?
I believe we've already paid it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And on the Town Mechanic, that, that one seemed a bit-
In light of, in light of the lease program, which was supposed to save us money, this seems to be a fairly large overage.
Well, let me put it in perspective. One, back in fiscal year 10, Town Mechanic had a budget of $93,917. And fiscal year 14, he had a budget of $60,000. So we did, there's $30,000 taken right off. Most of this, really, in a couple places. For the Fire Department, well, the other point I'd like to make is, the Town Mechanic is not fixing things for himself. He's fixing things for other people, he gets a bill.
Everybody, the school departments, vans, the-
It was $8,000, $8,000 on fire equipment. $7,000 on police. $4,000, or $3,600 on cemetery items. And there was also, in the highway line, they didn't, and I'm not sure whether this is the right kind of accounting, but they didn't segregate out repairs as a consequence of snow and ice removal during the winter. They put that here, as opposed to a snow and ice account, and that raised it as well.
Council and Aging, I know you guys were-
We were aware of that.
Aware of that one.
Pretty early on, yeah.
Inspection Services, I'm not quite sure what, do you have that?
All of that. For the Inspection Services, you know, Stanley has retired. And that's the accumulated sick time payout for Stanley, that's what that's all about.
Okay.
And he didn't notify us the year prior to retirement, so it could be included in the budget. Notify us officially in February.
We didn't know that, unanticipated.
That makes sense. Well, I was thinking, you know, about the other, like, the plumbing, you know, we kind of, we have an account to take care of some of that, so I was just a little surprised, so.
So that's, that's what the picture looks like.
Have you hired a new inspector?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Kyle Scott, started one July.
Okay.
He's inspector in-
Which is Northampton.
Northampton, and he's been doing part-time duty.
And then on the, on the flip side, money that's going back from various departments and everything will be a total of about $145,785.
And I just put down balances that were $3,000 or more, so there is more, but I just took the larger.
The numbers up there, that's not important. The important ones are the deficit we need to take care of. That's what we're doing tonight, voting on that. Transferring it from-
Right. And just re-explain to me, Paul talked to me about this before, there's some 3% rule as to how we transfer things, which is kind of cockamamie.
It's kind of cockamamie, yeah, yeah.
It's 3% of a departmental budget.
So if a budget's $100,000-
$4,000, whichever is greater. So 3% of a departmental budget typically is greater than $5,000.
Right.
Not really, no.
Well, not here.
Department, we're talking about DPW, school.
Fire Department.
Add your salaries and everything else.
Yeah, but, yeah, most of the, most of the departments, their, 3% of their total budget is less than $5,000.
Well, not departments, really. Department, I'm talking about police, fire, DPW.
So we're gonna, we're gonna need to change this a little bit, based on what Mike just told us, but, you know, I'm recommending that these transfers, we're pretty much wiping out the reserve fund. The Veterans Benefits is slightly under $5,000 when you add all that up. Yeah, 3% of the police salary was like $6,600, so that, that pretty much wipes that out. And then $5,000 from legal expenses, and then another $8,97 from EMS training, and then another $5,000 from vehicle fuel, and then another $2,161 from EMS training. And that takes care of our deficit.
Just a question that I have, Paul, is the salary. I thought once you created the salary line, you couldn't use it for expenses.
No, you can do transfers for any account.
Oh, okay, okay.
Except school.
Right.
School or water, right.
Well, that, that makes sense. I mean, the 3% makes sense. It prevents you from creating the budget in retrospect. Which is what you could do otherwise. Otherwise, you could just do whatever, you pass the budget to me, do whatever you want to do, and then transfer the money around at the end to make it work.
Yeah.
Which is what it's trying to-
We try to hold everybody to their budget, and that's-
No, I know, but if there was a rule that you could transfer unlimited amounts of money from one thing to another at the end of the year, then the budget would really have no function. Because you could just do whatever you want.
And, you know, some of the things, like I said, here are unforeseen. So what's the pleasure of the Finance Committee? We vote?
Do you want these all read into the motion? Or do you want as-
As submitted.
Well, we need to-
You gotta make a change.
We need to make a change.
Oh, because you don't need-
Paul, you want to get the figures?
I need them.
Don't need a motions, but it's 6 of 1, half of 1.
It doesn't matter. If we transfer it, what's gonna happen?
Oh, well, that's true.
It's gonna close to free cash, anyway.
Yeah.
May as well leave it.
Yeah, might as well leave it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to transfer funds as submitted on the sheet for a total of $65,764.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
You guys need to vote, too.
It's easy, once you got it all weighed out.
Before we, before we run off, is there a possibility of any additional change between now and the 15th?
Absolutely.
So we need to have a fallback date between now and the 15th, where we might reconvene for some small amount.
Probably will, because, you know, June's bills are coming in the first 10 days of the next month, and I'm sure I'll be getting invoices up till, I asked them to get them in by this Friday.
Yeah, but nobody should be spending their money over their budget.
Well, the 15th is a week from today.
They've got to be purchased or ordered before, not June 30th, June 30th or earlier.
But what I'm saying is, they better make sure, otherwise they send it back. I get credit for it.
Well, I send out an annual letter, an encumbrance letter, you know, people that ordered something, but it hasn't come in, and I just put in bold that, if you don't have any money in your budget, you can't come in.
There's no reason for us to have another meeting, because it's, we're gonna be past the date.
No, no. 15th, right? 15th is the date.
That's seven more days, that's-
And Mike is suggesting that we may get more bills in.
Right, you're not talking about people doing things between now and the 15th.
We're talking about bills coming in.
People who've already done things, now the bill's gonna come in.
What I'm saying is, if it's over their account, they're not gonna be paid. It can be an unpaid bill if they're over their account.
Well, it'll just increase the total deficits, which will require a vote.
Yeah.
If there are, if there are, there probably will.
Well, there's, there's an invoice that these guys approved tonight for laptops, Board of Health expense accounts, for $2,300. So if we go ahead with that, then we're gonna have to come back, gonna have to come back, yeah.
No, we won't be over, that's just money going back to free cash.
It's gonna include-
Frank, are you okay with the 15th?
Oh, that's right, no.
We're talking only deficit.
Yeah, never mind, never mind.
Board of Health has money.
Yeah, you have money.
Mike is suggesting that we, as a safety, as a precaution, we establish a second date right close to the 15th Thursday.
7 o'clock next.
I would suggest it, otherwise we'll have overdrafts, and I'll get written up by 12:00.
We can tentatively, let's just tentatively set a meeting for next Tuesday at 7:00 to take care of anything.
It'd be the 15th?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, inevitably, Mike's gonna get more bills in. But whether they affect any of these deficit accounts remains to be seen, yeah.
I mean, I think I already have some in, because, you know, Jenny processed vouchers up through last Thursday. So these numbers as of last Thursday, more come in since then, so.
Okay, 7:00 on the 15th, is that all we have? We only need two people, I mean.
Two and, two and three.
There's only gonna be ones and twos, the little things coming in.
Yes.
So Paul, you'll let us know? I mean, we're gonna plan for that meeting, but you'll send an email out to everybody if we don't have a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's a miracle and none of these overdrawn accounts aren't any higher, then I'll notify as soon as I can that we'll need a meeting by-
You tell them if they go over their account, they send it back, whatever they bought.
Now, wait a minute, now, I have a question about that. Will the Board of Select meet to that same standard instead of $22,000, man?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't think we bought anything, do we?
Yeah, $22,000 worth of stuff, right?
Yeah.
What's that?
What do we buy?
Well-
All the, all the-
If there are any, I mean, if there are any overdrafts, if we just pay them.
We already approved this. I'm talking about what we did next.
So if you're gonna overspend the account, do it early, is what I'm saying.
Paul, remember, he gets it back.
This is my last confession.
Yeah. I don't think I have any, who knows?
All right, so 15th, 7:00.
Yeah, and hopefully, there'll be no reason, but, you know, at least, Paul, will you post us?
I'll post.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, post, and then get back to everybody.
Did we have any other business?
Monday you should know, right, Mike?
I think that was the only other thing was...
Let's come in.
Bring them down to 2:00, right?
Yeah, if you're not swarming tomorrow.
I mean, it's, it's either a yes or a no on Monday. We're either gonna have the meeting or not, or on Tuesday. But you can't notify us on Tuesday.
What if he gets a big bill in on Tuesday morning?
Why, what?